It is timely. I wasn't getting ready to go, but um.
Yes, I'm letting them in as soon as they show up in the waiting room.
Okay, thank you. All right. Keep getting those. So I am going to call to order the town of Andover Board of Selectmen regular meeting for Monday, October seventh, two thousand and twenty four. The time is seven oh two. And our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Item two is public speak. Uh, I am going to start with Diane Grenier. Diane, you're 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 not being heard. Okay, while you work on that, I'm gonna go to Elaine Booker.
Hi, I'm signing on tonight to go ahead and um make sure that we get a full EDC. Um, operational tonight. That's on the it's on the agenda, so that's great. Thanks.
Yeah. Uh, I'll move to Rachel Bowman. Still, still.
And we'll stop for now, Jeff. Thank you.
All right. Catherine Hutchinson.
Is one working? Oh, all these different.
Diane, you're good now.
When I started, somebody said they could hear me. Now they can't. I don't know what that means.
Diane, we can hear you now.
You can hear me?
Yes, so you're up.
Okay, okay. High tech stuff, I'm sorry. Just. Hello, everybody. Um. I just want more. Okay, let me deep breath here. Thank you. Um, there's been some chatter out on the Facebook page this weekend, and I just wanted to, um, I'm not sure everybody was part of that or heard about it, and I just wanted to to comment on it. And it has to do with, and I don't know where this is originating, but it has to do with moving the Board of Selectmen um meetings from Zoom to in person. Uh, it seems that there's some person or people out there who feel that these Zoom meetings do not allow um proper um resident participation. Um, I know we have public speak at the beginning, public speak at the bottom, at the end of the meeting. Um, I never seem to have a problem getting in there and having to say what I have to say. Um, many of you know, um, I have been attending Board of Selectmen meetings for almost forty years. I'm a regular participant, and I I rarely miss a meeting. I was doing these meetings back when they were held at three o'clock in the afternoon at the basement of the um town office building. At that time, people complained that uh it was unfair to those that worked. People couldn't get to the meetings because only six to ten people would attend those meetings. Uh, so they moved it to seven o'clock at night. And guess what? Uh, seven to ten people would appear at those meetings. The same people would appear at three o'clock or seven o'clock. Uh, people would complain that Tuesday wasn't a good day, Monday wasn't a good day. Um, it's dark, I don't drive at night, um, it's family time, it's they they had a plethora of reasons why they couldn't go at seven o'clock at night. Uh, we moved to during the pandemic, they moved to the Zoom meetings. And here we've got um uh, the same people are attending. You you rarely get more than ten people attending these Zoom meetings. Uh, tonight we have a lot of people, and that's because there's obviously a hot topic. If there is a hot topic, no matter if it's in person or if it's Zoom, people seem to manage to get to the um to the meetings. Um, like I said, there was a lot of discussion back and forth. Uh, some people have suggested a a hybrid where you have both in person and the Zoom meeting. I think that's a great idea. Um, either way, I go to the meeting, so it's not like I have a real problem with either way of these. Um, but I think I I don't know why this is an issue. I guess that's that's my point because um, people don't go to these meetings for whatever reason, again, unless there's a hot point. And tonight it looks like there's a hot point, and I suspect that uh tonight's topic is probably the election um of a um for the replacement of Paula King on the Board of Selectmen. Um, and I'm just to comment on that, what do you got, like four or five people? Um, I'm surprised and somewhat disappointed that since I go to all these meetings, I have never seen any of these people attend a Board of Selectmen's meeting. Um, it seems that they wish, I would have thought that they would have more interest. Um, that 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 bothers me. I would hope that there there be more interest. And again, this is your decision. We don't get to vote. I think there's probably a lot of people here. Um, somebody has done get the vote out and um is looking for support. Um, I'm not supporting any of the candidates. Um, like I say, I don't know any of them. The only person I know is or seen is uh Steve King that I know that he's running for both uh State Senate and the Board of Selectmen in Andover, which I find disturbing. It's um which one do you want? If you win as a senator, does that mean you're not going to be Board of Selectmen? So that's a problem to me. I didn't like it when Lieberman did the same sort of thing, like pick what you want to do. Um, but I don't know, Steve. I don't know any of the 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 people. Um, I'm, like I say, I don't get to vote, but I did want to um just give you my comments about Board of Selectmen meetings being moved to in person being people. You really need to find a way to get people to come to them, and I think a hybrid is probably the best way. So I don't know if that's behind the agenda, if that's just jabber jabber out in the gutters of Andover, you know? So thank you for your ear.
Thank you, Diane. Uh, Dave Uitt.
Uh, just to Diane, I'm not on Facebook, but I am in favor of a hybrid meeting. I like the in person. I like the conversations you can have with people before and after meetings. I think it would be beneficial for the town to move to uh in person as an option.
Bob Hamburger. Just here as a spectator tonight. Thanks. Bob, you gotta fix that. There you go. Yeah, nothing to say, just just here as a spectator tonight. Thanks. Okay. Catherine Hutchinson, I'll come to you again. Okay. Carol.
Nothing right now. Thank you.
Wayne Kasich.
Nothing right now.
Okay, Steve Willard.
Hey, Jeff, thank you. Um, yeah, I just want to uh throw my endorsement again, as I did last month's meeting behind Joe Godwin. Um, I just want you guys. It's up to you guys, obviously, like Diane says, that we don't get our we don't get our say, so I'm gonna have my say for my two minutes. Um, I feel that uh Joe was much more community minded. Um, if anybody liked, if if we were all big fans of the way Paula King um sat on the board, I think Joe Godwin is going to be the closest thing to that. Um, I don't, I don't like what I'm seeing with Mr. King. Again, I'll I'll echo Diane and say that I'm not sure I understand um which direction we're going, whether it's Senator or Selectmen. Um, but I really think that uh you guys, you guys have a little bit of tough decision to make tonight, but I I'm gonna throw my hat in the ring for Joe Godwin, and um I think that's gonna, he's gonna be the best for the town. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mike and Kathy Plazey.
Well, I'd like to thank, uh, I'd like to thank you, Jeff, for um calling me so many times to talk about the new building. And I appreciate that. And the fact that we did move to the new building uh to have our lunch on Friday, we had a great time. We really did. Uh, and thank you very much for coming so early to set up the tables and Carol Lee, which she's always great. She helps us a hundred percent. And um we we really do have a wonderful staff that we've put together, mostly Carol has put that together, that I've just approved it. They're all great. And um they're they're really hard workers. They do a great job for us. The certified service from a Chili's. There's uh no other word for them. They're just fantastic group of three ladies that come and serve us, and we can sit there and enjoy ourselves. It was so beautiful. It was a great day. It was sunny. It was a an excellent day outside as well as inside. Uh, Representative Steve Weird was there. He was our uh speaker for the day, as well as I asked Jeff to please speak. He did. Uh, people, uh, the seniors did have questions. Uh, he promptly answered them. I was pleased with that. Um, and of course Eric was there to support us as always. And um I just want to say we love the building. Um, we found it was a little tight, but uh when when I say that, it was a little tight. We had forty two people. We didn't normally have more than like thirty five, thirty six, something like that. When it's a special occasion like Diane just said today or tonight, it's a special occasion that we're looking for a new select person. So uh good luck with that, with your decision, and uh that's all I have to say, but thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you, Kathy. Jeff Ballard.
Unmute. Can you hear me fine?
Yes, sir.
Um, I want to speak on behalf of the uh Burn App Clock. Uh, Anne, uh, Kremay and I and Dana Polino have met uh last week and found a suitable wall in the new senior center. I understand the concerns about not having it in an old community room, and I totally agree with that. Uh, I think that this has been going on for uh a long time. And it may be at risk of Daniel Polino pulling the clock and the works and setting it up in his daughter's house. And uh we have found, well, Anne will attest to this, that we found a suitable wall where the bookcase is in the middle room with the couches. And that is the place that it should be. And I would hope that the Board of Selectmen would uh select that as a place to have it set up. Daniel Polino is a contractor and will take care of fixing into the wall, which is not a problem and not an issue. And uh I would like to see the uh the Board of Selectmen uh make a decision as to the display of that clock on that wall in the senior center, where the seniors who seem to have an appreciation for history and antiques will be able to see it. It, the room itself can be closed off, so it's not a disturbance for any meetings or any any other um concerns. Um, it's just a bell that goes ding 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 on the on the hour and half hour. And uh if you have read the seventeen page packet that Arthur Livernt prepared on the history of that clock, I think that 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 should stand on its own as being uh something worthwhile and a very rare item that represents the history and um culture of the eighteenth century and over Connecticut.
All right. Thank you very much. Bill Penn. No. There he is.
Hello, um. First of all, say I got, I don't know enough, don't know really know any of the candidates, so I can't recommend um who I think is the strongest candidate. I don't know their skills, don't know their qualifications, or how these persons have served the town or even taken an interest in the town during their time as a resident. Um, I look forward to hearing the candidate interviews, and I trust the Board of Selectmen will evaluate the candidate's skills and select the one that best supplements your current skill sets that are make up our current four members and again, Board of Selectmen, thank you for all your time you do for the town. Good day.
Thank you. Uh, Bob and Kim Wallace. Okay.
Uh, I'm sorry, I was having trouble unmuting. Um. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, Bob and I are both here publicly publicly to support Stephen King for Board of Selectmen as the only candidate endorsed by the Andover RTC. Um, I guess we're a little confused as to why there is a discussion um about why the
One second, one second. I'm I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, Scott Hayden, can you please mute yourself? Thank you. Um, I'm sorry, Kim, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not quite sure what you didn't did or didn't hear, but I was just saying that Bob and I are both here to publicly support Stephen King for Board of Selectmen. As we understand, he's the only candidate endorsed by Andover RTC. Um, we're a little confused as to why there there would be um someone else up for the Republican spot uh who has not been Republican and is not endorsed by the Andover RTC. Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you. Scott Hayden. Okay. We'll move on. Leanne Hutchinson.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, this is Leanne. Did you call on me?
I am right now. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks. I was in the process of unmuting myself. Um, I wanted to follow up on what Diane, the portion of Diane remarked about the discussion about the Board of Selectmen meeting in person again or not. I strongly support the idea of a hybrid meeting. And my main point is that the acoustics in a community room just have to be addressed. They're very poor. I've been in there for meetings, and I've been unable to hear people in the same room. And when you try to listen to it on YouTube, it's if the Board of Selectmen goes back to using the community room or any other work for that matter, it's very difficult to hear. It's really a disservice to anybody trying to listen to a meeting and participate in its entirety. So I strongly support any hybrid meetings. Um, you know, sometimes it's just a personal preference to stay home. Um, unfortunately, COVID is not literally over. Some people are immunocompromised, but the acoustics in the community room are are really poor and need to be addressed. I've not been in the new community center. I'll be in there later this week. Um, I was told that one of the rooms is in about the same shape. I don't know that personally. But if if it's any room that's to be used as a meeting space, I would hope that it would receive the same um improvements in the acoustics if that is an issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um. Kimberly Persson.
Nothing right now. Thank you.
Joanne Eber.
Sorry, took a minute to unmute. I just have a couple of quick comments. Um. I am more in favor of keeping the Zoom meetings. Um, I guess I would be in favor of hybrid too. I understand Diane's points. It's just those of us that do hold down busy, full-time jobs, plus try to serve our community on a board like this um and want to be involved and go to a lot of meetings. It just it does help out when they can be Zoom because you are able to get home and um you know, be involved that way. And going to like a two or three hour meeting after a long day without even trying to get a dinner in there, that that does make it kind of difficult, Diane, but I understand the camaraderie and it's fun to see people too. Um, moving on. Um, I tend to stay out of political discussions a lot because I try to just vote on issues as I see them. But I have to be heavily in favor of having a balanced board. I think it makes it very important on all the issues that come forward amongst, you know, the our leaders in our town. So I would be more in favor and and backing up, I think it was the Wallaces that spoke about, you know, if if one of the people that, especially on a board that already has three on one side, to really be in favor of getting a Republican voted in this time. I just like to see balance. I'm not political. Okay, moving on to that, and I hope whoever does get elected. Um, I attend a lot of meetings, so I get to see names or, you know, people faces that come to meetings. So I think it is important to have had an interest in the town, been involved. When I brought this up at the Board of Finance meeting, though, I had to understand that a lot of people are busy like all that are here tonight, and they can watch it on the the network, you know, on the the television station that broadcasts it too. So just because we don't see their faces, they can see it that way. So I I can see that. So hopefully these candidates, I'm looking forward to hearing all of them as well. Um, you know, I like to hear people on, you know, what they're going to say, what they're going to present, why they want to be a part of it, and um good luck tonight.
Thank you. I'd like to move on to two cell phones, and I'm just gonna repeat the last four numbers, two one eight oh. Okay. I'll move on to six oh three seven. Okay, did I miss anyone that would like to add to public speak? Um, I actually I did, and I apologize. Um.
Hello?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm the six zero three seven. I forgot uh how to unmute. Um, Dave Tibido. Um, and my name probably doesn't show up, but I'm here for a different reason, but I like to comment on what I've heard so far. Um, I think that
Dave, one second, are you running for the position?
Yeah, I have my name in.
Okay, so then why don't we hold off until your your time?
Okay. No worries.
And then the other phone number, two one eight oh. And I I'm gonna go over to Doris. Um, Doris, I know your name is on the agenda, but if I understood your email correctly, you are a registered Democrat. Is that accurate?
Actually, I'm registered as um working families and but that doesn't take into effect, I was told, until next month.
Okay, so so you are a registered Democrat. Now you're a member. You're trying to switch her to working.
Well, I already did in the summer, but it doesn't take effect until a few months after.
Okay. All right, we'll we'll let you go uh and participate in this, and then um we'll just, we'll just be fair about it, and there's five people. I think I I think we have all five, don't we? We have Stephen King, we have Joe Godwin, we have Doris, we have Joe Tibido. Oh, um there was one other member. One second. Well, what I'm gonna do is uh I had received a message from uh from a couple of residents, the Board of Selectmen had received email correspondence, and uh I'm gonna read the emails so that everybody can participate, if that's okay. Um, I'm gonna start, and and Jeff Murray, please correct me if I'm missing anybody, because I tried to keep all these up, but if I miss somebody, let me know. This is from
I think we only had three emails coming in, so.
We had three emails? Okay, so let's make, let's make sure I read them all. So this one is from Liz Lokech. Uh, she's a new member of the Board of Finance. Hello, Board of Selectmen, I am I am un- unable to attend Monday's Board of Selectmen meeting when you'll be deciding on the replacement for Paula King. So I'm writing to let you know my opinion as a resident and taxpayer as to Paula's replacement. Stephen King is a legit Republican, a member of the minority party as required for Paula's replacement. Not only he is he an official registered Republican and a member of the Andover Republican Town Committee, he is the Andover Republican Town Committee endorsed candidate. Stephen has the qualifications, the heart, and the commitment to serve in this position. Mr. Godwin, a registered independent, claimed in his letter to the board that he had been registered as a Republican prior to moving to Andover. What evidence does he provide to support his claim? He then conveniently changed his affiliation to ensure he would qualify for admission to the board. This seems like a tactic for a possible left-leaning candidate to take over a Republican seat, which could completely upend the balance and power in favor of the Democrats. As a citizen and taxpayer who voted for Paula King, I feel that selecting a candidate other than the Andover Republican Town Committee endorsed candidate Stephen King goes against the will of the voters, and I strongly urge the Board of Selectmen to consider the negative optics of voting against the endorsed candidate. In closing, speaking as a resident and taxpayer, I am asking the Board of Selectmen to make the only correct choice to vote Stephen King to fill the vacant Republican seat on the Board of Selectmen. Respectfully, Liz Lokech. And Jeff, who was the other one? I thought I had another one.
We just got one at six o'clock.
Oh, I did. I'll read that one off my phone. Give me a second. I kept that one up.
And then I'm gonna look for the other one.
Yeah, I thought there was another one. Uh, we received an email from Steve McCarthy, and his is short. I like this one better. I would like to express my support for Stephen King. I believe he would be a good fit for this position. And um.
For some reason, my email is not going back far enough to find it, so I'm trying to get back to our meeting, because I think that email was sent right after.
Uh, I thought I sent. Well, that could be true. I copied all of the emails and tried to get them out in front of this. I know that's David Tibido. Okay, so uh if I missed something, I apologize. I don't really think I I missed anything that um.
I see a, excuse me. Um, I see an email back on September thirtieth from a Stephen Lovelace.
Okay, let me find it.
Yep, that's it, I believe.
What day was that?
September thirtieth.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, but there it is. Scanlin Yankee. Um, can someone read that? Because I can't find it.
Yeah, I can read it. Yeah.
Oh, I got it. I apologize. It's Stephen Lovelace. Uh, I was looking for the email. It was under a different uh baggerdude@AOL.com. I am voicing my support for Stephen King. I also think this meeting should be held in person at the town hall. Regards, Steve Lovelace, three oh eight Boston Hill Road, Andover, Connecticut. All right, um. I I will also tell you that not in the packet I received uh and and I'm gonna read this because it's it's a I received an email from the Republican Town Committee Chairperson. No, I I will, I won't read it because she addressed it to Jeff, to 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 me and Eric. Um. That's fine. And Jeff, what I'll do is I'll send this to you. And if you want me to read it, I will, but let's uh let's get moving on.
Based on this matter, we should probably read all this into the correspondence.
Okay, then.
Because if these people, if if people didn't, uh, if they couldn't come tonight and they they took the time to write.
Carol, Carol is Carol is not here, so it's Carol Barton, and she so.
Okay, okay, that's that's.
She's not here, so I might as well read it. Um, Jeff and Eric, this mail is email is to remind you that the Andover Republican Town Committee endorsed Stephen King to fill the vacancies vacant vacancy position that Republican Paula King created on the Board of Selectmen when she resigned. Stephen King is a true Republican, not one who only changed his party to hopefully get an existing Republican position. You two are of the Democrat Party and should not be soliciting to fill position that we, the Republican Party, found a person to fill the Republican position and have endorsed that said person. Also, it would be a smart idea to stop having Zoom meeting. COVID is no longer causing large issues, and we now have two community rooms that we that need to be used for community meeting. All members of all boards and commissions are returned to normal meeting. Residents should be advised that this will be happening and hopefully happening very soon. Thank you, Carol Barton, Andover Republican Town Chair, Andover Resident. Okay.
Hey, Jeff, I've got one more that came in on ten six, I think that we forgot.
Okay.
It says it came from Lorraine Fox Cos- Costano. So I'd like to nominate Stephen King of Andover, Connecticut for seat on the Andover Board of Selectmen. I believe that he will bring a particularly strong set of skills to this role, and that the board will be fortunate to have him as a member. He is a dedicated and hardworking, extremely organized and focused on learning and developing best practices to manage any activities he may face face working on the board. I've known Stephen King for many years, and I've worked with him in the same IT department at the University of Connecticut. I hope you will consider giving Stephen an opportunity to be part of your organization and serve the town of Andover. Sincerely. I hope you will consider giving Stephen an opportunity to be part of your organization and serve the town of Andover. Sincerely, sincerely, Lorraine.
All right, is there anything else that needs to be read into the record for um, public speak? Okay. Let us move on to uh, item three. Um, so I I'm just letting everybody in the public know. That please mute yourself. This part of the meeting, we're gonna move on to is for the selectmen, uh, select people and apologize. And we will, um, we will be bringing in the candidates to speak that are available, so. We're gonna move on, so we're gonna go to item three, additions, changes and changes to the agenda. Anybody on the board have anything they wanna uh, add or delete?
Um, are we gonna have an executive session to discuss the candidates?
Uh, we can have an executive session that will require that all of the members of the public will be needed to be put into the waiting room. Uh, we can add that, um. I don't have a problem with it. So.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, uh, so we're gonna add, uh, and we're gonna add.
Don Denly would like to contribute to the conversation.
Well, I, I, Mr. Denly is my best friend and as you know. I was hopeful that he would show up on time to participate in public speak, which is not.
Well, I've been, I've been online for thirty minutes waiting for my turn and I heard you give my number, two eight one zero, and I was unable to get through.
Don, you were unable to mute, unmute yourself?
Maybe, I don't know what it was, but I didn't.
Here you go, go ahead. I'm, I'm reverting back to public speak to allow Don Denly to talk. You're welcome.
Thank you. Don Denly, Lakeside Drive, Andover. I would like to first of all, address. The meetings, obviously being a uh, a senior. I much preferred uh, in-house personal meetings, because you got to interchange ideas with people in the audience and with. And with our elected officials, but a hybrid meeting would certainly be a reasonable compromise. Um, as far as the candidates go, I would like to personally endorse Stephen King. I think he's a, he's a Republican nominated, uh. Sub uh, replacement for Paula King who did a great job. I'll miss Paula King very much. He was a great um, town, town person who contributed to our. In many, many different ways, but Stephen King is, is the choice of the Republican Party. He's taken a Republican seat. Uh, the fact that he's running for another office is really not that relevant. I mean, he will certainly abide by all the meetings and be a conscientious participant. And I think he'd be a fine choice and I think that's a choice you guys should make. I know that it's a primarily Democratic. Majority right now, but I think that, um, well, I feel that Stephen King would be the right person for the job. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, for letting me speak.
You're welcome, Don. You know it. Anybody else that I miss? Anybody, anybody? All right, everybody mute themselves. So we have a, a motion on the floor for an executive session to be placed. We're gonna call it, um.
Um, please mute yourself, please, Don.
We're gonna call it. We're gonna call it seven. Seven two, seven one, uh, executive session. And what we're gonna try to do is determine if we need to speak about the candidates after the interviews are over. Is that acceptable to everybody? Okay, anything else we need to add or delete?
Um, I wanna have a, uh, I know Eric sent me some information, but should we have some discussion over the proceeds for the auction of the Public Works Equipment? And where that, uh, where those funds are going to be deposited?
Sure, um. Uh, Jeff, new business, ten E.
It's fine with me.
Okay, uh, proceeds from.
Can we do it under nine G bid result for roadside mower?
Oh, thank you.
It's just not the roadside mower, though. We have other pieces of equipment that we're selling, so we need.
We could do it at the same time.
Okay, I'm fine with that. We'll just amend, amend that line item to say.
Uh, roadside mower and other equipment.
And truck.
How about we, how about we call it nine uh, H and we just say proceeds from equipment sales?
It's fine with me. I'll second that.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay, so, um, we have two uh. Items that we're gonna vote on. One is an executive session, a seven dash one and uh, nine H. Uh, discussion regarding proceeds from equipment sales. Uh, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed? None? All those abstain? None? For nothing? Okay. We're gonna move on to item four, a board and commission presentations. I'm assuming, do we have any board or presentations that I would hope we could push till next meeting? Uh, Elaine, are you doing anything related to EDC? I don't wanna short you, but.
Nope. Nope.
Okay, you just wanna know that we can deal with.
Just get, get the appointments in, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna move on from item four. We're gonna move on to item five, uh, five A. Um, Liz Lokech was appointed to the uh, Board of Finance and that's just for informational purposes only. Item, uh. Five B, the EDC requests appointments. So Diane, um, Elaine, if you could, just tell us what you're, what you're asking for.
Sure, yeah, because, because we're a five-person board and we're, we're down to two people. We don't have a quorum, so we can't by rights vote in new members. We have to turn to the Board of Selectmen to do so. And we have two people who now want to join the EDC. Um, Patrick Doherty, who was on the EDC before and a great member. But then he got a new job and had to work second shift and third shift, so that's why he left the board. But now he's back to first shift and pretty steadily, and so he's rejoined on planning and zoning. And now he wants to rejoin EDC and we certainly need him. Because he would be, uh, he was before and would be our liaison to everything going on in planning and zoning. So we need, uh, Patrick Doherty, um, appointed and then, um, Beata Gadamsky. Um, uh. Is, uh, also, I believe, on the new, um, field improvement, um, board, working on the, uh, new playground and. Uh, pickleball and she's, uh, quite involved. Um, she's quite an involved resident, really, in, in other things involving the town, so. Uh, she's a realtor, a- as I am, so, you know, we, we basically know about this, the sales and. Marketing and all of that, so that's a really good, uh. Position to have, um, information to have, so, uh, we definitely would like Beata.
Let me, uh, let me just make a motion on those two, because I think it's great that they're willing to volunteer for, for the town. So I'm gonna make a motion, we point Patrick, uh, Doherty, Doherty and Beata Gazamsky to the EDC. To, uh, and, and I'm gonna step one back. Elaine, what's the term? Is the term just the normal four years? So they have three years remaining?
Uh, it's two-year terms.
So it's gonna expire in, in twenty twenty-five?
Yes.
So, uh, I'll rephrase this. I'm gonna make a motion to appoint, uh, Patrick Doherty and, uh, Beata Gadamsky. To the EDC for the term that expires in twenty twenty-five. All right, uh, further discussion on the appointments? All those in favor? Aye. Right, okay, for nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, resignations. Eric, do we have any additional resignations?
Oh, we do not.
Okay. Um, we're gonna move on to item seven with the, this is elections for the Board of Selectment position. That is currently vacant. Um, as I said to, I sent out an email to all the candidates, uh, on Friday. I, uh, told them that we would give them an opportunity to speak. I'm. Hopeful to keep it at three minutes. I'm gonna time it. I'll wave to everybody if we're getting to it. And then we're gonna give the members of the Board of Selectmen an opportunity to answer or to. Uh, ask any questions of any of the, the potential candidates, um. No, I'm just gonna, we're just gonna move on, so, um. In the list, it was done alphabetically and I know that we have Mr. Godwin here, we have Mr. King. I know we have Doris, I saw her, and we have David Thibodeau. Jose Rivera. Uh, sent an email earlier today. And, uh. When we get to him, I will read the email. So, uh. Mr. Godwin, you're first on the list. Um, I will ask that you, you, uh. You provide us some information and what I'll do is, um, we'll see how it goes and if I have to wave at you, I wave at you. Is that acceptable?
Yes, sir, that works and you can mute me if you need to as well, so.
Oh, I try never to do that. I don't wanna do that. All right, um. Um, any of the other members of the Board of Selectmen have any other issues as to how we go about this? Anybody wanna say anything? Before we get going? All right, Mr. Godwin, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to talk. I do apologize, my presentation skills, um, are a little zapped. I've been working down in Southwest Virginia, getting folks' power on, so. Heading back home, uh, tonight and tomorrow, so looking forward to be back. Um, you know, just going a little bit about me, um, you know, when I, when I first saw this, uh, position open up, I saw actually multiple vacancies as, as we all did. Um, you know, and it's not something I had considered ahead of time, um, but saw an opportunity to serve, serve the, uh, the town, so. Uh, figured I'd put my hat in, in, in the ring and, uh, hopefully be useful, uh, for the town and be helpful for, for our residents. Um, you know, kind of to clear the air, uh, you know, I was never a registered independent. Um, and it, no offense, Jeff or Ann, but I've never been, um, uh. I've never been accused of being a Democrat, so it's a little twilight zone to me to, uh. To hear that, um, but I guess that's what I'm asking for, putting my hat in the ring, uh, and being politics as what they are. Um, I am a conservative, so, uh, I'm hoping, just kinda give a quick overview of who I am. So I'm originally from the Groton, New London area, uh, and I moved away to California and Louisiana, moved around a little bit with the military. And then, uh, back to Connecticut in twenty nineteen, so could have landed anywhere in Connecticut. Um, you know, wanted to kinda have a close, uh, mix between home and family and work. And, uh, driving around, we, we settled at Andover, so we really love this small-town feel, um, you know, we, we, we appreciate that. Uh, we had three children at the time, go, all going to AES and we found Ram, the school district, very appealing and decided to, to settle here. Uh, we've had a fourth child, uh, in the town, uh, again, he's going to AES, so they're all huddled there along with my wife, who's a teacher. At AES, um, and, you know, we have a heart for our kids and, you know, I think our, our level of involvement's probably been. Uh, not as much as we would like, just because there's bedtime at six, seven o'clock, but we're, we're getting during a new phase of, um. Of life and having a little bit more time in the evening, so looking to, to, to serve in a capacity that'll be helpful to the town. Outside of work, uh, I'm an elder at Hebron Church of Hope, right down the road, uh, most of you are aware of it. You probably drive by it all the time with the big red barn. Uh, little white church in the center of Hebron, so you can find me there on Sundays, um, that's what I do outside of work. Uh, but as far as professional experience goes, uh, I'm an emergency manager. Uh, I oversee the emergency management program for the state of Connecticut's, uh, ever, for EverSource, the state of Connecticut. Um, and previously I was doing emergency management in the oil and gas industry and my introduction to that. Uh, profession was through the United States Coast Guard, so I went through Cape May, New Jersey, Yorktown, Virginia. And, um, you know, through that experience and consulting, doing oil and gas and government. Uh, I've worked with every single level of government, so, uh, from your small towns in the middle of nowhere to, uh, you know, all the way up to the White House. Uh, doing reports and, and working with, uh, with different leaders. Um, you know, I've got a proven track record of solving complex problems. Uh, and I use project management, program management and change management techniques to do that. And, uh, you know, I have served the town before in a different capacity, um, you know, uh. You kinda see a need, fill a need, uh, we had a traffic issue around the lake that, you know. Unbeknownst to me was an issue for a long time, um, you know, speeding around the lake, so. Uh, served as the Traffic, uh, Safety Committee Chairman, uh, did that. We saw some, some efforts around the lake to, to do some traffic calming measures. So I worked with Eric and, and the team, uh, and, and yourself to, to do that. Um, so why me? Well, I, you know, I'm not a politician, guys. Uh, I'm not gonna pretend to be one. Um, I just wanna get back to the community. You know, I served in the, uh, uh, the Volunteer Fire Department for a little bit. COVID hit. Uh, my son has bad asthma, so kinda had to bow out of, uh, doing volunteer firefighting. Uh, but, you know, I enjoyed that group of guys and I can't speak enough about them. Uh, worked with Steve, um, you know, we've had emergencies at our house and Steve. Is one of the guys that showed up in his pajama pants, so, you know, y- you look at this community and, you know, the people that are in it and it's very tight knit and. We're not planning on going anywhere, so I just wanna give back my time and energy. And then, you know, again, leader, proven track record. I vested interest in the town for, uh, not only myself, but my children. You know, I'm a conservative. I value people and I, I value individual freedom. And again, I, you know, just looking at that, I do have a good balance of being a visionary and, uh, a pragmatist. So, you know, I, I like to hear everybody's viewpoints, vantage points, uh, everybody's perspectives. I think they're valuable and should be considered. Um, things like, you know, the hybrid Zoom. In-person Board of Selectment meetings, I think, I think there's a valuable opinion that, that has some, some consideration to be had. And then I think my current skills would complement, uh, the Board of Selectmen as they are now. Um, you know, I, I did switch to a Republican, um, but. You know, that, that's what I was back in Louisiana, southwest or southeast Louisiana. And, um, I was unaffiliated, um, for a while while I was up here and, um, it, I guess it wasn't relevant in the time. Uh, again, uh, I'm not politically mo- motivated in, in that fashion, so. Um, but I am a conservative and, and so being a Republican is, is something that, um. That I do, uh, embody, so that's, uh, that's all I really have to say. I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
Joe, thank you. Um, uh, any members of the board have any questions for Joe, Mr. Godwin?
Um, Joe, you, do you have, uh, you're sure that you have time for the Board of Selectmen position?
Yeah, absolutely, you know, the trip that I'm on right now doesn't happen, but every three years or so. Uh, when we started looking at catastrophic storms and moving out of the area. And then with my kids, they're all gotten to the age now where I do have time in the evenings, um, so, yep. I will be able to. I, I can't, uh, jump on an ambulance at, at, at a whim, but I definitely can make time to, uh, to engage in the town. Thank you.
What happens next week when you have another category five come through Florida?
Well, it won't be me, it'll be somebody else, thankfully, so, yeah.
Okay. Uh, anyone else?
Yeah, Jeff, I'd like to ask my few questions.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, Joe, you mentioned you, you were a strong conservative and you mentioned that two or three times during your discussion. And if that conviction was so strong, then why didn't you? Not register as Republican, join the RTC? Partake in elections as a Republican and, um. Question number two, you said you were on the Safety Committee, um, you did address some speeding. I'd like to know a little bit more about your experience with the fire department and, um, you, you mentioned it, so. I wanna know, uh, what was your involvement with the fire department and are you still a member?
Yeah, no, great, great questions. Um, you know, yeah, so I am a conservative. I'm a conservative Christian. I'm a conservative, fiscal conservative as well. Um, and, you know, registered down in, in Louisiana. I registered as a Republican as soon as I could vote. I voted Republican. Um, moving up to Connecticut, um. You know, there was questions of the, the political, uh, field. I, I didn't know what was what, to be honest with you. Uh, living down south for as long as I did, there was differing views of what to expect, uh, moving back up north, so. Um, I went unaffiliated, which means I, I didn't pick a party. Um, you know, and that gave me some time to really digest the, the political field and, you know, how I was gonna vote. You know, I typically vote, um, you know, Republican, um, you know, there's not. I don't think there's a situation, um, in which I wouldn't, um, you know. But I am considered bipartisan, uh, I don't. You know, I don't do, um. You know, I don't, I don't devalue other people's views, if that makes sense, uh, but, yeah, so, you know. I didn't see the, the need to, to go Republican because I was voting Republican. Uh, again, I'm not a politically motivated person, um, but I do vote and, um. You know, the RTC, I did reach out, uh, once I saw the, the newspaper ad. Once I saw the, the newspaper ad about the vacancies. And by that time they had already endorsed a candidate, so there wasn't even time to engage it from that format. And to be honest, I hadn't heard of the RTC in town, I don't think there's been any outreach that I've seen. So, wasn't sure, you know, really what to expect with that. And, and again, my, my level of time to, to commit to pure politics, you know, is, is I feel better served with my family instead of pure politics, so, anyway. Yeah, and then the Fire Department, you know, I come from a family, family of firefighters, you know, so I wanted to kind of do some of that as well, so I joined and participated. Rode the, the ambulance with, with Kim and Karen quite a bit and Scott, doing lift assists, I didn't go to the academy. I'm not a, you know, certified firefighter. But, you know, did, did help out jumping on those ambulances and, and helping some of our residents around the area. They needed it, and then COVID hit and things got a little bit different, so I did, I did bow out. And, and I'm not, I'm not a member anymore of the Fire Department, but again, still, still have those relationships, so.
Okay, like my concerns are is being a conservative, I mean, when I moved to Andover, the first thing I did was look up the RTC and I joined, that was the first thing I did. So I'm a little concerned as a Republican and the only person that's on this board, why you chose to register as a Republican on the last day before this was going to close. It's just an issue that I have, why you weren't a Republican from day one, and it's just, it bothers me a little bit and I, I kind of question it, so.
Yeah, that's a fair point, but yeah, there's no deviant intentions, but I, I understand.
I would like to make a comment that I, I spoke with three of the leaders at the Fire Department today, they all they all said about the same thing in different ways, but they said that Joe was a very very nice guy for one thing, morally good, a hard worker, intelligent, smart. These are the three leaders down at the Fire Department, they told me they had nothing but good to say about Joe Godwin, the only reason he got out of the Fire Department because he had too many things going on at home.
Scott, and that brings to my concern, as a Board of Selectman member, we all know how hard this job is and how sometimes we need to do things at the drop of a hat. And it does pull a lot on us and it does pull a lot on our family, and so we need somebody that's needs to step up when they need to step up, so.
And he, and he, and he just said that he would.
Yeah, well.
Okay. Unless anybody has any direct questions for the candidate, I'd like to move on. Anybody else? Ann, okay. All right, Mr. King, you are next. Obviously, Mr. King, I have some flexibility in the time, so we're going to give you what you need, so you go to it.
I'll try to hold to the three minutes, I know that this could run late tonight. First and foremost, my last name is King and I am not in any relationship to Paula King. But I would like to thank the Board of Selectmen for considering me as a replacement for my fellow Republican, Paula King. A couple of things I want to start with, first, you've probably seen some signs with my name on it running for State Senate. I don't expect to win in, in launching a political campaign or aspirations, it takes a couple cycles to gain traction before you can even begin to muster up the type of votes needed, especially in the District Four, which is predominantly blue, so I don't expect to win this election cycle. I'm nearing retirement and I've also freed up a great deal of my time, recently retiring from the state military. So I have a lot of extra time on my hands and I'm looking to, especially after becoming a grandfather this past, or last spring, last year. Trying to promote some change, maybe I can make a difference and, and do some things, and if I, I I don't want to get to a situation where I haven't at least tried. So that, that is the reason why you see my name on the signs, it certainly will not impact my ability to serve as a member of the Board of Selectmen in any way, shape, or form, so. My name is Stephen K. and I've been an Andover resident for some 14 years now. Live on Burnet Brook Road with my wife Julie, who was born and raised here in Andover. Her mom still lives here on Pine Ridge in the home that she was raised in. We are here to stay and I hold only the best interest of our community, the residents, and my neighbors at heart in seeking this appointment. Since my resume was not included in the packet, provided, I'll give you a little background or a little brief on my background. I have a Bachelor of Science in Management and Information Systems, postgraduate certification in healthcare information technology. And I have over 40 years of experience in designing, implementation, and support of critical technology initiatives. I'm employed at UConn Health, going on 12 years now, a little over 12 years, where I manage high-performance computing, data storage, and virtualization technologies, provided to the UConn campuses, including support for approximately $350 million in grant-funded research. I'm Chairman of the Board and Chief Range Safety Officer for the Andover Sportsman's Club here in Andover, Connecticut. Certified NRA Instructor and Chief Range Safety Officer and a Chief Instructor for the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. I donate my time to teach conservation education and firearm safety statewide. I am a federally licensed firearms dealer and the owner of Pop River Trading LLC. A suc- a successful small business that I started many years ago, which I manage estate liquidations, high-end collections, appraisals, and sales. I'm also the President of the E. Connecticut Gun Guild, which by statute holds a seat on the State Pistol Parliament Review Board. Couple of things I want to say about the proceedings and what's happened to date, I'd like to point out to the board, those present and the voters of Andover, that I am the only Republican Party endorsed candidate seeking appointment. Our charter recognizes state statutes, which identify a maximum majority of three from a party of a Board of Selectmen when there are five total seats. The remaining seats must allow for minority representation. I also must point out that the state statutes are clear in identifying that if an elected member of a minority party resigns during their term, which Paula did, they must be replaced by a representative of the very same minority party. Therefore, the currently vacant seat, the currently vacant seat must be filled by a Republican. Now, the optics of changing one party, changing one's party at zero hour for the mere purpose of qualifying, qualifying for the seat and minority representation do not reflect well and should raise suspicion not only by this board, but by all the residents of Andover. I am the only properly vetted and as I stated endorsed candidate seeking this position. I trust that you will find my qualification satisfactory along with my skills to fill the void left by Paula who supported a lot of the technology used by the town. I'm happy to donate my time now that I have some free time and look forward to a strong and successful bipartisan working relationship if you allow me the opportunity to serve, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone have any questions for Mr. King? I, I have one. Mr. King, you said you're, you're running for the current State Senate seat, but you don't expect to win. But you went, you went on to sit there and state that you were trying to build up name recognition for future endeavors and what would those future endeavors be, your, your goal is to become a State Senator or hold higher office?
When I retire in, it's been looking, looking to be three to four years, if the opportunity presents myself to run as a State Senator, I will do so, I would like to do so.
No, no other questions?
I'll, I'll ask Steve a question, like what, what else, what else do you do in town besides the Andover Sportsman's Club and what does the Andover Sportsman's Club contribute to town and how are you involved in that?
I had that question asked of me today, we do a lot of events that raise money and we raise money and food for the Food Pantry.
Do you know how much you donate every year to the, to the Food Pantry? Do you have a general?
Probably in the neighborhood of, well, it's a lot of food, so. Anywhere from $800 to $1,200 worth of goods a year, through the, through the charitable as we do.
Okay, anyone else have any questions, Ann?
Most of my questions he's answered already here.
Scott?
Good, Jeff.
All right. Mr. King, thank you.
Thank you.
Doris Maldonado? I know you were on the call earlier.
Yes, I am.
All right.
I think there's a, a delay, but good evening, everyone, and I appreciate your time. I definitely am not registered, I did not know, actually, the public notice that specified only that interested residents should apply as long as they weren't Democratic. So all were invited to apply, which is why I applied. The reason why I haven't been, haven't applied or participated on this board has been because I've participated on the Board of Education with, with funding opportunities, I just moved here with my children two years ago in August and as soon as I moved in, I started to, to connect with townspeople and, and the Board of Education, so. I was the, a little bit about me, I was appointed by the Governor as the Chair of the Development Disabilities Council, which is federally funded, and I've served as Chair statewide and nationally on several boards and regarding disabilities. I was born with a disability, so I take that very close and it's near and dear to me, and which is why I've afforded some opportunities and connections for Andover as soon as I moved in with the administration, the federal administration with for community living for, and so that Andover can receive or apply for some funding to make us more accessible in the, at the community center and other locations, if possible, through the Board of Education and other opportunities. I've worked as a, I've worked and advocated and trained communities from the life, on the lifespan from birth to aging as to their legislative rights, and when I say birth to lifespan, I mean their parents and their communities. So I would love to be a resource if I am not eligible for this, and I'm sorry if I'm, I'm taking up your time. But I wanted to formally introduce myself and wanting to help when I can and offer opportunities, we're a small town and I, I'm, I'm making my, my, I'm rooting myself here with my children. We did come from West Hartford and then Berlin before that, Connecticut, and so I'm very invested in every community that I live in because I'm trying to leave a better place for my children and my, my fellow community members. I've spoken with many of our leaders in town and trying to connect and I have, I have volunteered and reached out to, to community members, so thank you for, I am also a substitute teacher and I, I am a certified teacher, so whenever I have the opportunity, I do help out. Thank you for your time and I wish you well in this endeavor.
Jeff, you're muted.
My bad, I did a Denly, I apologize. Doris, thank you very much for, for, for participating, you know, I I would tell all the members of the community to volunteer as much as they possibly can, so thank you very much. Any of the other members have any questions for Doris?
Yeah, just a quick question, Doris, did you just change your party affiliation from Democrat to Working Families, correct?
Yes, in the summer I did.
Yeah, so you have the three-month rule, so that makes you, I think it's, she's eligible to run for this position.
The reason why I applied, as I mentioned before, was because the public notices said that anyone other than Democrats could apply, and at the time when I saw the notice, I was other than a Democrat, so it wasn't clear for me. But thank you.
Understood.
All right, anyone else? Okay. We're now going to move on to Mr. Thibodeau? I know you were on the call. There you go. Okay, sir. Thank you for bringing your
No, I appreciate the opportunity, I know I was late coming into this application process. I think that from what I've heard so far, you're not going to go wrong by whoever you choose, I feel like I need to endorse Stephen King, but I'm kidding, but congratulations Stephen on becoming a grandfather. And to Joe, for someone that thinks he doesn't have good presentation skills, they are pretty good. But, you know, I'm not going to pretend to be a politician, I'm not. The reason that I applied for this position was merely because I believe that there needs to be a paradigm shift in government that it no longer needs to be treated the way it has been in the past and it needs to be more treated like a business because it's just too large. Government needs to seek other revenue besides taxes. And being an engineer, I've worked many years overseeing multimillion-dollar programs in aerospace industry and realizing that in, in both military and commercial, military obviously is easy pickings, but the commercial industry is not and budgets are very important and knowing how to manage a budget and being able to manage contractors and reducing costs are very important. And since I left aerospace, I've been working in manufacturing for the last 10 or 11 years and reducing costs in their business, reducing costs over 50% in just their overall expenditures on what they spend on electrical and, and things like that. So I, being an engineer, I think differently than, than most people and I think some members of your board can understand that, that I am a problem solver. And I have been for many years and I've been trained to problem solve and to look outside the box and figure out solutions that are not clear to most people that maybe there's another alternative of revenue sources and things like that to bring money into the community that is not merely taxes. As everyone knows, we're taxed so much in every way and it seems like government today looks at, well, what are different ways I can tax, can I tax on the air that they breathe? Can I tax on the water that they drink? You know, it, it, it's becoming a little bit ridiculous that I think that government, and I'm not talking about our local government, I'm not talking about this committee and talking in general that there is just no looking differently at how to be, how to create revenue other than taxes. And I know there are revenue sources other than taxes, I don't know the resources that are involved in, in getting them, but I feel like the paradigm shift needs to happen, not only in local government, but in all government, that you can't just rely on taxes to run your community or your, or your country. And I think that we're seeing that.
Can we, we, I, I, I'm sure everyone appreciates that, but on a local level, do you have anything else you want to express to us regarding this position?
Well, I mean, I, my views are, are expressed at the local level as well. I mean, I think that even at the local level, you can create revenues other than taxes. And, you know, I'm thinking as someone that's not a politician, it may not be a popular opinion, but that's just how I feel. And maybe I'm not you know, I don't think the way that you do, but I think that there's other ways of thinking outside the box.
Does any of the, any of the members of the Board of Selectmen have any questions for Mr. Thibodeau? All right, Mr. Thibodeau, thank you very much for participating, we appreciate it. Mr. Rivera, Jose Rivera, he sent an email. Uh, Mr. Rivera, Jose Rivera, he sent an email. Uh, he didn't copy any of those on this, but I will read this. Yeah, Mr. Thibodeau, please mute yourself. Um. This is from Jose Rivera, David Rivera. So he's like, I appreciate your consideration for the vacancy. I unfortunately will be working on Monday, second shift, three to eleven P M, and will not be able to attend. I have been a nurse since two thousand fifteen. Prior to that, I was a, I was licensed in the insurance industry. I have been a registered Republican since I was eighteen years old. I am now forty-nine. My motivation to apply uh to apply for the position of selectman is the desire to make a difference in the lives of my community in a positive way. I have never served in such a position. In my position as a nurse, I have come across thousands of individuals in their time of need, offering guidance, care and empathy for points of view that may not have been mine at the time. In the end, the goal was always to serve. So with that, I feel I am ready to serve my community for the for the better. Being a part of the process is what compelled me to apply. My only reluctance is that I'm still working. So if being readily available is a qu- requirement, then I see an obstacle in me serving due to my working schedule. If any consideration can be made for the scheduling of meetings and voting on issues, I would appreciate that. I look forward to hearing from you and thank you for your consideration. Jose David Rivera. That being said, we have now completed the candidate interviews. Um. I'm assuming that the board would like to go into executive session. Is that accurate or not?
Yes.
Okay, someone needs to make a motion to that extent.
Make a motion, we go into executive session.
Anne Kremay seconded that. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. So members of the public, we're gonna have to put you in the waiting room. And um Eric, you're gonna stop recording on this and once um and and we're not going to invite anyone.